To the January 8, 2018, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission, and Happy New Year. If you would stand with us, please, Commissioner Chip Pinion will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Chip?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to come tonight and to do business of the county. We thank you for all that you do for us and all that you blessed us with. Father, we pray tonight for wisdom and knowledge and understanding that we need as we go through these items that are on our agenda. Father, we pray, as a whole, tonight for our country, for our state, our county, our cities that we're all a part of, Father, that you would continue to strengthen us and guide us and give us what we need as we continue to lay the foundations for the future. Father, we thank you for all those that serve our country tonight, both here and abroad. We pray for them. We pray for their families, not only on the military side, but also in our public safety environment as well. Father, we just thank you so much for all that you do for us, and we ask you to guide us and direct us tonight. We love you and we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Call the roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater. Lee Bogle. David Jones. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Pettis Reed. Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. This time I'll call on our Vice Chair, Mike Kush, for the reading of the October 23 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those meeting minutes. They appear to be in order. I have no corrections, so I would like to make a motion for approval and submit those to the archives.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our October 23 meeting. All who's in favor of that motion, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. We do not have any items withdrawn or deferred, but under item five, I'd like to add a final plat to discuss, so if someone would help me with suspending the rules, make a motion to suspend the rules. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, to hear a final plat. All who's in favor of that motion to suspend the rules, please say aye. And motion carries. Thank you. I believe you have an agenda added item in front of you. Item 17-2016, Popular Cove, Section 4. This is a reapproval. Four lots on 6.45 acres, zoned RM, located off West Sagefield Drive. Harmony Homes of Tennessee is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Happy New Year. You don't have this sheet of paper. This was really more for our reference than anything. This probably does look familiar to you. This was originally approved back in February of 2017. Final plat approvals from the Planning Commission are only valid for up to 180 days, or with the plats recorded, whatever comes first. The approval window for this plat has since closed, so they're just asking for a reapproval of this plat. Nothing has changed from what they were asking for originally. It's in good shape. It's just a matter of having a reapproval on it.
We have a motion and a second to approve 17-2016, the reapproval of Popular Cove, Section 4. Any discussion? All who's in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6, items that are rescheduled, are scheduled for rezoning hearings and public hearings. Item 6A118-A001, John Elliott for Front Street Partners. Location is on Elam Road. Commission District is 18. The county commissioner is Alan McAdoo. Size of the site is approximately three and a half acres. Tax map 126. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The applicant's proposing to rezon this property in order to locate the headquarters for their construction company, Southern Building Group, on the property. The applicant has submitted a concept plan and proposed interior drawings, which we included with your agenda package. You'll find those on your emails in the agenda. Additional information provided by the applicant indicate that there may be some limited outdoor storage of construction equipment in the future, but not immediately. Of course, any outdoor storage would have to be appropriately screened based on our zoning regulations, especially considering the proximity of I-24 that backs up to this property. As these are conceptual plans, and I know the Planning Commission understands this, this is not something that's binding. They're not asking for a planned development in this case, but I just wanted you to see what their, kind of what their thoughts and ideas were for the particular property. There's an existing billboard that is on the property that will remain as a legally established nonconforming use. Access to this property is currently and will continue to be from Elam Road. Any new access ways or parking areas developed on this property would have to be done to current county standards. Anything, any CS zone property, excuse me, is required to install a type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties. And again, as I stated earlier, any outdoor storage would have to be appropriately screened as well. A landscape plan submitted along with the site plan, if this were to be approved and development pursued, would indicate that. And of course, our performance standards would apply to this particular property as well. This particular property is very close to the city of Murfreesboro's city limits, as you can see. I've included in your agenda packets their current zoning map and future land use maps for this area, as well as the applicant submitted materials. This area has changed considerably since the interchange at I-24 was built and Joby Jackson constructed. Staff does not believe that this property will ever develop in a residential, single-family manner, and we also believe that this request is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. With that, we would recommend approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Doug. Questions for staff? This time I'll declare a public hearing open for items 18-A001, John Elliott for Front Street Partners. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. If you would, if you would state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Russell Wright. I live at 2338 Reedhurst Drive, which is approximately one block off Elam Road. This is strictly a residential area. The majority of the neighborhood that I have spoken with through the Neighborhood Watch groups, both in Somersby subdivision and the Reedhurst subdivision, have expressed that we are opposed to this zoning change. My opposition is based on three phases. One is this neighborhood at this time has been completely overwhelmed with traffic. When the Amazon facilities and the commercial facilities that have been built on Joby Jackson, it has created Elam Road as a shortcut through our residential neighborhood to South Broad I have pictures that I would be happy to share with you. This is a normal morning with over a quarter mile backup of traffic at Elam and South Broad Street, and this is a normal backup, both from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM and from about 4:30 to 6:00 PM at both ends of Elam Road, both where it connects to South Broad Street and to Joby Jackson. Now, when you add to the traffic problems that we already have, a construction headquarters, there are going to be, there's going to have to be semi-traffic. A construction company is going to be receiving materials and equipment by tractor-trailer. Both ends of this section of Elam Road already have restricted signs that restrict tractor-trailer traffic. So not only are you going to have to break your own rules to have tractor-trailer traffic coming to this construction site, we already have, and I would be happy to submit these pictures, these are pictures taken in front of my house on Reedhurst Drive of tractor-trailer traffic driving around in our subdivision, in an area that's already restricted to tractor-trailers. So you're going to have to break your own rules to have tractor-trailers even in that area. So we already have traffic problems. We already have a limited access area, and you're proposing that we include more tractor-trailer traffic in an area that has absolutely no traffic control to start with and is restricted to tractor-trailers already. So those are my positions, and again, I represent the Elam Road, or the Reedhurst subdivision Neighborhood Watch group, and we are asking that you reconsider this zoning change based on these facts. And I would be happy to share these photographs with anybody that would be happy to see them. I'd be happy for you to put them in the file. And now those, those pictures of the tractor-trailers, there are only two of them that were taken with an automatic camera. The others were just, I happened to be in the front yard and see a tractor-trailer coming down my subdivision street and took pictures of them. It has come to a point now where there are at least, there's an average of one a day driving around in a subdivision. Now, this is, these pictures are not taken on Elam Road. These are taken more than a block off Elam Road. So unless, unless your agenda is to finish destroying the residential quality of our neighborhood by allowing and attracting more tractor-trailer traffic in that area, then that's the only reason that I could see that you would approve this zoning change. That's, that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Happy New Year. My name is Joanne Plow, and I actually live on Elam Road at 2232. We purchased our home because it wasn't a residential area. It is a two-lane road. Lately, because of the amount of traffic and people going up and down that road, going to and from the commercial buildings on Joby Jackson, the amount of trash, garbage, a few months ago, there were multiple green garbage bags thrown all along Elam Road. They were all filled with premature marijuana plants. We moved here for a reason. It's a residential area. There is so much other commercial property available for such a company like this that would not intrude on our homes, our property values, and our peace of mind. It is very loud at night when the shifts are changing at Amazon, that it's a shame that we can't sleep with our windows open because our bedroom windows face Elam Road. Please don't allow any more traffic to go down a nice country road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Parker, and I live in the Reedhurst subdivision. All this fuss over a little bit of land, right? I just want to express concern without zoning, without doing proper studies. If you would do a traffic count on Elam Road, you will see that what we are stating is facts, that both ends of Elam Road, on the Joby Jackson side and also on the South Broad Street, get backed up both in the morning and afternoon where it's nearly impossible to go anywhere. There's no lights at either intersection. I've asked both the county commissioner and the city about that, and because it's both in county and city area, seems like there's a discrepancy of who's going to take care of that. In our neighborhood particularly, we have a lot of older people, and some of these people don't feel comfortable getting out and driving because of the traffic, and it's not that we're opposed to growth. Growth is great for our county and for our city. We just would like studies done and planned, planned growth for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the comment about the signage for no tractor-trailers, who determines there's no tractor-trailers that goes up and down that road, or who puts the sign up, or where did it come from?
I believe that'd be our county road superintendent, and he's present if you'd like to speak with him on that.
Those signs that this gentleman's talking about are, they say limited access, and I put those there because we've had a lot of calls about the truck traffic on Elam Road. They are using it for a bypass, if you will. And it is somewhat shorter. However, the reality is, I cannot forbid, if you will, a tractor-trailer or any other truck to go up and down that road. I put those signs up in an effort to detour that from happening, but I think a lot of times, their GPS leads them through there, you know, if they, if they program in shortest route, then that's, that's where it's going to take them. So I put those signs up in an effort to maybe discourage them using that road. However, Tennessee Code Annotated will not let me, you know, completely stop them. So that's just an effort I made because I've had a lot of complaints. Now, you know, so that's where we're at.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one else, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Doug, can you, on the slide you have up, can you show again the residential, the current residential active sites?
Zoning you're talking about?
Well, where there's currently residential neighborhoods established.
The, directly across the, well, not directly, but kind of across the street, you'll see to the south, there's a, and that's in the city limits of Murfreesboro, there's a multifamily development at that location. As you start going north on the road, and Mike, if you could kind of pan up, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, that's the multifamily that's directly across the street?
Right. Yes, sir. That's right.
From this?
Right. And if you start going further up the road, you'll see there's a PRD, that's also, right, that's also a city development right there. Go a little further up the road, then you start getting into the Reedhurst neighborhood and in that area.
And that, that is Elam right there?
Yes, sir. That's correct. I will say that the city of Murfreesboro recently adopted, this was actually, this is in your packet, but the city of Murfreesboro recently adopted their major transportation plan, which does show this Elam Road as being a future three-lane segment. Now, I don't think that, what timeframe today? It's a middle-term improvement, yeah, medium improvement. So nothing imminent by any means, but it is something that they have identified as a future improvement. Now, currently, that's not on the county's long-range plan. Now, we have had some conversations about updating our plan. Now, whether or not this would fall on it or not, you know, is anybody's guess at this point, but that's just throwing it out there for full disclosure.
They did that the, this is a location for headquarters for a construction company.
Yes.
How many tractor-trailers would be required?
Well, I think that's something that the, right, that one, the information was provided by the applicant. There was no mention about any large tractor-trailer trucks or anything like that. Now, if somebody is present representing the applicant, they might want to, you know, if there'd be a suspension of the rules, let them speak, they could come up and maybe clarify some of that, but there was no information like that. I just know at the beginning, they're not looking at any construction equipment being stored there, vehicles or anything like that, that may be in the future. So as far as any larger traffic, truck traffic, that may not be an issue to begin with, but I'm not saying it won't be in the future.
Do you know what kind of construction this company does? Is it residential or excavating?
I don't think it's excavation. Again, they could probably speak a lot more to that than I could at this point.
Why don't we ask the applicant to come up and address some of these questions? Is the applicant here? Anyone representing the applicant here? Never mind.
I'd like to make a motion to defer until the applicant can be present.
Doug, I thought you did mention that at some point in time, they expressed that they would be putting equipment on this site.
That is correct. Not immediately, but at some point they probably would. Yes, sir. Right. And just so everybody knows, when we send out our notification, we do a notification to property owners in the area, as well as putting out a sign on the property, which I'm sure somehow some of these neighbors found out about it, because they're not within the 500-foot radius that we would do. But we also send a letter to the applicant themselves, so this would be something that they would, they should have known about this.
I believe it's Joe Franks instead of Alan McAdoo.
Based on the map I looked at, it was actually on Alan, it was Alan's. Yeah, I was, in 2010, when the census happened, some of the areas changed, and, yeah, I was a little shocked myself. I thought, I talked to Commissioner McAdoo about it, and I said, "I think this is the first time I've ever had a rezoning in one of his districts," so.
We've had a motion and a second to defer. Is there any other questions or comments? All who's in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye. Is there any opposition to that? This one, this application will be deferred for at least 30 days, and will be heard at our next, reschedule for our next 6:00 PM meeting.
Just for the folks that have come to the meeting, we'll send our notification protocol and everything again. Again, if you didn't receive a letter because you weren't within 500 feet, and you want to know what the status is of the application, feel free to give me a call at the office. I can be reached at 615-898-7730. So if you were to call me, I can tell you for sure when it'll be on the next agenda.
Item 6A218-A002, Teresa Robertson. Location is 7488 Low Lane. Commission District is 8. The county commissioner is Pettis Reed. Size of the site is approximately eight acres, and there's only two and a half, two, three acres to be rezoned. Tax map is 139. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The applicant lives on the property. Conversations with the applicant indicate that a potential developer asked if they'd be interested in selling off a portion of the property for development purposes. You can see from the map on your screen, on the big screen, or on your agenda packets, however you want to look at it, it's a rather, it's a fairly large piece of property, but there's a good chunk of the property that has a significant amount of road furniture along Highway 99 and Low Lane. That's the area really in question that they're looking at. Possible uses identified included a gas station, convenience market, and other general retail uses. The applicant's decided to apply only for a portion of the property, roughly three acres, probably closer to two, at the corner of Low Lane and Highway 99. The existing house will remain on the property and is not part of this rezoning application. This time, there hasn't been a concept plan submitted. The applicant is aware that if this application is recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, they will have to have a surveyor identify the exact area to be rezoned. Further conversations with the applicant indicate, again, they are considering between two and two and a half acres. For the map purposes, we estimate it kind of on the high side, just to give them a little more latitude. That way, we weren't locked into something, but they can back off of that pretty easily. It won't be greater than what's shown on the map that's on the screen or in your agenda packets. The closest, excuse me, closest non-residential zoning district along Highway 99, which is commercial services, is located approximately a quarter mile to the southwest, which is the Triton Development. The closest non-residential zoning to the northeast, again, commercial services, is about one and a half miles. This is going back toward Murfreesboro. There is also a small pocket of commercial neighborhood zoning at the intersection of Low Lane and Old Jackson Ridge Road to the north, approximately half a mile, again, to the northwest of this property. Access to the property is currently along Low Lane, but should this application be approved, of course, they'd have to submit a site plan for our review and for the Planning Commission's review. We would evaluate access at that time. Any new development on the property would need to be constructed using current county standards, and any access on the Highway 99 would require T-DOT approval. Buffering, again, commercial services zoned property does have to install a type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. I would assume that if this were to be developed, that that portion would be subdivided off of the parent tract, and so there would be a buffer between the parent tract and the area to be rezoned, as well as any other required landscaping for parking and maneuvering areas, and performance standards would apply as well. This is within the suburban belt character area, and Highway 99 is identified as an urban-style corridor. We do feel that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and staff does recommend approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present.
Know exactly how much land that we're voting on, whether it's two acres or two and a half acres or?
It'll be no greater than three. It's probably going to be closer to two, two and a half, but again, for display purposes of what I'm showing on the map, that's closer to three acres. It's easier to show a little bit more and then scale down than it is to try to scale up from what's shown. So if they're looking to do two and a half acre-ish right around in their area, only a surveyor is going to have to determine the exact area, so, but it won't be any larger than what you're seeing on the map.
Any use will be subject to a site plan. Then we would have to do a site plan on anything in this zoning, correct?
Yeah, the applicant would have to submit a site plan. That is correct.
We'll know about the acreage, then?
Yes. Well, we'll know, if this is approved and moves forward, we'll know about the acreage before it goes to the county commission, because I just can't give them something that says, "Well, they're going to rezon about this much." I'll need a legal description from a surveyor that says, "This is what we need," or "This is what they're asking for." It just, it won't be any larger than what's shown on the map.
I have a question, Doug. There's still so much undeveloped land around this. Could they not do what they want to do with a commercial neighborhood zoning? It's a step down, isn't it, from the CS?
It's possible, yes. Now, the one, I don't necessarily have to draw back, but the one condition with commercial neighborhood property that's not there for commercial services, they can still do convenience markets, gas stations, those kind of things, but they are limited to general retail, 5,000 square feet. So if they wanted to go greater than that, they would have to ask for commercial services. Anything less than that, they could do commercial neighborhood. That is correct.
Any questions for staff before our public hearing? This time I'll declare a public hearing open for item 18-A002, Teresa Robertson. This time, so I don't make a mistake, is the applicant available? Would you please come forward? If you would, give us a kind of a brief description of what you want to do.
Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Robertson. This is my wife Teresa, and we're very, very excited about being a part of the Rock Bell Group. When we moved there, we had anticipated, we're on Highway 99. This will someday develop. Now, fast forward 17 years, and now we've got a new substation, and I've got an 18-inch water- substation, and I've got an 18-inch water line running right through the front yard. I mean, we're good. So we consider this to our benefit financially. We don't, we don't want, we kind of want to pick our neighbors, because we're going to live there forever. This is our spot. But this is such a nice prime area for development, and we need some things. We don't even have a Domino's. In fact, we don't have a stoplight, but we'll work on that eventually. We'll get one of those, I'm sure. But, so we would propose to the Commission to approve this. Now, I have, and you will laugh out loud, because this is, I'm a virgin at this. So I run over here to Randy Dickerson, my neighbor in the back, and I said, "Listen, Randy, you don't have to come out tomorrow and do a site says. You can do it next week." He said, "We'll see you in about six weeks." I said, "Okay, well, that's great." So I went over to Johnny and talked to him at Huddleston, and I said, "Now, I guess Randy's really backed up, but you can come out next week if you want." He said, "It'll be about eight weeks for us." So we can't really properly survey that until after the soil scientist is done with his work, and we'll be glad to submit that to you guys when we have a plan in concrete, once these gentlemen are done with this. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Any questions for the applicant? Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Wouldn't it be wise for us to wait until the soils come back and the survey comes back before we make a decision about this? Because I feel like we're kind of flying in the blind a little bit, not knowing, not having more information.
That is an option. You can do that. I mean, if you're comfortable moving it forward, we could always hold it up at the County Commission level, as opposed, we've had to do that before for the same reason. There was one I can remember, I think it was on John Bragg Highway, that we ended up waiting about three, four months before they could come through. But it'd be up to you as to how you'd want to proceed. You could defer it here, or you could make your motion here, go it one way or the other, and then just we could hold it up at the County Commission level.
There's no pressing urgency to rush through this. I'd like to defer it until we have the information on the soils and the survey.
It's a motion?
It is a motion, yes.
Motion and a second to defer item 18-A002 for additional information. Any other comments?
I don't know that two and a half acres or three acres makes any particular difference to me on how it's going to be rezoned. I mean, I'm familiar with the Rockvale area, and they could use a convenience store out there. And I would be willing to guess that that's, based on what they've said and where the property is, that that's going to be the intention of it. The exact size of the lot doesn't particularly concern me. I feel comfortable with moving, with discussing it further and moving forward with it tonight, but.
Planning Commissioner and County Commissioner from that district?
Yes, I'm looking at this in two different directions, as the Commissioner out there and as well as Planning Commissioner. First of all, let me say, there has not been any contacts to me as far as any problem with the site. I did speak to the applicant. He did call me, and I did tell him that he does need to talk to all the neighbors out there. And he has done that, from what I understand. And I've had some neighbors to call me and say that they were okay with this situation right there. Where this is located, it's probably, where it's sitting, is probably one of the better sites up and down that road, I guess, right there. It's just, if you look right there to your left, Triton is just, just over that tree line there is where that's at. And he's exactly right. Right there, where the blue line is consolidated, is running a major water line, that is to help Ebbel that goes all the way back down that road right there. So this whole roadway right here, with this water line being extended there and the work there being done there, this whole roadway, we're getting ready to look at some things that happen there as far as individuals wanting to do some things in that area out there. So, but I do understand what you're talking about down there as far as the guesswork exactly as far as the site is concerned. I mean, I can understand that. And exactly as the applicant said there, everybody's behind as far as measuring and surveying and soil scientists and what we're trying to find. But I do know what has happened there right now, and as far as the area out there, there is not problems that have developed at this time.
Is there a recommendation in there, Pettis?
I would, you know, I think as far as the applicant's concerned right there, I think it probably would be better for his benefit there that if we did come up with those soil sites and to show exactly where you are planning to do this, really, when it comes down to it. Yet, we probably could go on and do some guesswork right there, but I think for your benefit, I think it would be better to, you know, know what we've got and where we're going, and that way you can say exactly what we have.
Come back up, please.
Thank you, sir, and thank you. When you're brand new at this, you're not knowing which, you know, is it half a dozen, or is it six and one, half dozen, the other type thing? We didn't know how to quadrant up this spot until we got Randy out there to do the soil perk test. And so a lot of what we didn't have to present to you was an exact, because we're not too sure. We don't want to give it all away. We want to give what we need to give away. It did impact us a lot when they tore up our ground, because we mowed that this way and then that way, you know, made it look like a golf course. But now, that's not a golf course anymore. It's, with the new substation and all the infrastructure, it's an obvious thing that it'll all develop. So we're trying to get our proverbial ducks and roars to play you guys, so that we can figure out how many acres that we're going to ask for. Well, that depends on the soil site, but quite frankly, we're going to have to spend some infrastructure cost prior to that. So we just don't know. So we want to get it approved to get, okay, you guys are all on board. We're going to go ahead and do this before you spend all this money getting the soil site, getting the guys to come out and survey it. Those are cost factors after the fact, and I understand it's all in your hands. So I would petition you guys to accept that, so I can go on and start spending money. Then I got to come back. I got to come back with a plan. I got it. But right now, I don't have a plan. I just got a corner. But I don't want to spend a lot of money unless you guys are okay with that being a commercial spot type thing.
Mr. Robertson, is it your intention to keep as much of the property for your residents as possible? Is that...
Yes, five acres or more, yeah. We don't want to give it all up. We want to find out what will suit certain places, and that depends on where we're going to have to put the leach fields, will determine how much ground that we're doing. We may end up petitioning the Commission for two acres or two and a quarter acres. Just depends on how that all lays out. So we'll get the balance of that. We'll keep as residential, whatever it is, that we don't have to have that infrastructure.
Your intention to continue living there?
Forever.
What will be next door?
Yes, forever. And I'm going to pick my neighbors.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to defer. Ready to vote on that motion?
I just want to say one thing. I don't foresee a problem with it. I just feel, I'm like Rhonda, I just feel a little more comfortable knowing where the soil site was, knowing how big the soil site was, and knowing exactly where the property lines are.
Comments? Ready to vote? We have a motion and a second to defer item 18-A002. All those in favor of that motion to defer, please say aye. Opposition? Call the roll gal.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater. Lee Bogle. David Jones. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Pettis Reed. Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
No.
Six yes and five nos.
Motion to defer carries. I guess this will be added back on the agenda at whichever time the information is available to...
Yes, sir. I wouldn't expect this to be on next month's meeting, just listening to the timeframe that the applicant was speaking about, and he is right, they are all backed up. I mean, that, we see that in our office daily. We know that that's the case.
Thank you. Item 683-18-A003, Lisa Hamilton for Coleman Covington LLC. Location is 5020 Burntob Road. Commission District is nine. The County Commissioner is Joe Gorley. The size of the site is approximately 7.3 acres, but only seven of those will be rezoned. Tax map is 78G. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS, commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Our third and last rezoning tonight is for property located at the corner of Burntob Road and Gritten Court. Conversations with the applicant indicate, as you stated, that they are interested in selling off a majority of the property, about seven acres, for commercial development. The remaining .3 acres will remain zoned, residential, RM, and will be combined with the property immediately adjacent to the north of the subject tract. A concept plan has been included with your agenda materials. Potential uses include a mini storage facility, as you can see on the concept plan, and a commercial strip center located along the front of the property. Mini warehouses are only allowed by special exception in the commercial services zone, so even if this is approved before any site plan that we would see for this particular development, they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the mini storage component of what they're asking for. The applicant's also aware that this is recommended by approval by the Planning Commission. As we were talking about in the last application, they would have to have a surveyor identify the exact area to be rezoned prior to the Board of Commissioners meeting next month. The closest non-residential zoning, for the county at least, located, is located along Burntob Road, is Commercial Services and Commercial Neighborhood. It's about a half a mile to the west of the subject property. The site is located across the street from the property, also recently annexed by the city of Murfreesboro for use of the West Side Park. According to the Murfreesboro Planning officials, there is property at the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Burntob Road, and I'm looking at that map. I think I may had a typo there. That zoning, commercial zoning is actually to the east for the county, not the west. I apologize for that. But the property at the intersection right there, Mike, if you could highlight that. Yeah, it's the one right on the corner. That one right now is under consideration for commercial highway zoning. In the city of Murfreesboro, the closest equivalent to that would be Commercial General. It's kind of the more wide-open of the commercial zones that they have there. Access and parking, there are access points to the property which are shown on the concept plan along Burntob Road and Gritten Court. The applicant's concept plan also shows access to both roads. Staff has relayed to the applicant's representative that access to the development would need to be revisited. Quite frankly, I'm not real fond of seeing the access along Gritten Court. I'd rather just see it on Burntob Road personally for what they're looking at. But again, even if this is approved tonight, this is conceptual. They're not locked into this. So that's just something I want to be all, to be made aware of. Commercially zoned property, again, has to have a type-two buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. Performance standards would also apply to this development. One other thing about this, I'm going to turn this over to Mike to discuss. This is in what we would call the drainage-sensitive area, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mike for further discussion.
Let me update this. This is in, like Doug said, a volume-sensitive area, and back in the 2010 flood, it was inundated by water. And I'll zoom in, let you see a little bit easier. It will be a challenge, whatever they do here, to make this work, and I apologize, it's taking its time. And this is the property in question right here, and this is two days after the rains had stopped, and we still have water in this large portion right here. So if they're going to fill the area up front for commercial property, fill the area in the back for mini storage, what we would require that the design engineer do, do a detailed hydraulic study to make sure that the water surface elevation is not elevated on the adjacent properties. So we'll, they'll have to sharpen their pencil pretty hard and see that they can make this work and show us that they can make it work. So it's going to be a challenging piece of property to develop. I'll say that.
Just going on to staff's recommendation, we remain neutral on this particular request. And as you can see from my staff recommendation, I said we have mixed feelings on it. There are several factors that do support rezoning, this property, which would include recent annexations and commercial rezonings in this area, the future West Side Park in the city of Murfreesboro right across the street, and eventual plans to widen Burntob Road to five lanes. We were meeting with city officials earlier, and they anticipate that as part of the project for the West Side Park, that that may be something to look at, at least that portion of Burntob Road right in there, going ahead and doing the widening project. So in that sense, those kind of lend themselves to this particular rezoning application. That being said, this property is across the street, across Gritten Court, from several single-family homes. Any development, as Mike said, would have to be sensitive to the drainage concerns that we have in the area, as well as to the established homes in the area as well. So we could kind of see both ends of this particular application. So with that, again, we didn't make a recommendation one way or the other on this. So we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Doug, are you going to require them to go on, not on Gritten Court? Or is that going to be a mandatory thing?
As far as I'm concerned, I really don't think it's appropriate to have access on the Gritten Court. I can kind of see what they're proposing when you look at the concept plan. I understand where they're going with it, but at the same time, I just don't think having the access along Gritten Court really is something we'd want to see right there. Of course, there has to be a lot of things fleshed out with that design. Typically, you see mini storage has, facilities will have security access points. Right, looking at this, it looks like they've got two or three different ways to get into the development. I mean, that certainly is not going to be what you see eventually for that. So personally, if they were to come in, if this were to be approved, and they were to come in with a plan that showed access on the Gritten Court, I probably would say it needs to be on Burntob. And quite frankly, looking at some of those access along Burntob, I think we need to look at that as far as, you know, how close are those access points, especially that one closest to Gritten Court? You know, we don't need any conflict points between the access there and someone trying to get in and out of Gritten Court. So again, it's conceptual, so I'm not locked into it, but I do think it's something that needs to be revisited.
Those nine, those nine lots, they all come out on Gritten Road right there, don't they?
Yes.
That's their access.
That's correct. Even that corner lot, I don't think, yeah, it looks like it's driveways on Gritten as well. Yes, sir.
Okay, it looks like the size of the lot is 7.3 acres, and they're wanting to zone seven of the 7.3. Where is that .3 acres?
The .3 acres would be, if you look at the concept plan, can you get that concept plan out? It'd be, right, it'd be that triangle right there. It would be combined with the property adjacent. And it would go to that house right, there you go, right next door.
Any other questions for staff? Ready for a public hearing? This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 18-A003, Lisa Hamilton for Coleman Covington. Is the applicant here? Is the applicant here?
Chairman Phillips, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Rundert-Hilson, Steel Engineering. I am representing Mrs. Hamilton, as well as her development group, the Coleman Covington Group. She's there available for any questions you may have specifically to them. As far as how this process began, they're in the, they have the hopes of bringing some business into the county, and they would like to start a mini-stores type of business at this particular location. And so after doing lots of research on different properties, they found this piece of property the one that was suitable for what their desired interest is in the property. And as Doug mentioned, it has some prime characteristics as far as for rezoning. The West Side Park is really a key, and I've been a part of some zoning around that, and I have the city zoning exhibit in front of me, and part of the catalyst on Burntob Road, as well as Veterans, those are really your frontages to the park. So both those situations, both Burntob Road and Veterans Parkway, will really be considered kind of gateway roads into the park. So we think that a lot of that's going to go towards some kind of commercial application. Mrs. Hamilton and her group saw the potential there, that this could be a really good application for potential commercial, as well as there's a lot of new rooftops coming in, there's a major plan development basically to the northeast of this particular piece of property. And so it is an area that is rapidly changing. Most people in that area kind of know that. Just the park's impact, and really, actually, as far as working with the City of Murfreesboro, every time there's any kind of rezoning around the park, the park wasn't really a part of their comprehensive plan, and all of a sudden, once the park came in, they've kind of reevaluated all the vocabulary related to adjacent relationships to this park, knowing that the potential of it to be a regional impact park versus just a local impact park. So with that being said, you know, it bordering 840, it just really limits the amount of exposure and access points to the park. So I think when Mrs. Hamilton and her group saw this as a potential development for commercial property, I think their judgment was correct. And then, so what we already have is we have veterans basically deadened into Burntob, and as Doug mentioned, where that happens, that piece of property on that corner is already slated to go into a commercial type of zoning, and that's probably in the future going to be some kind of node, a commercial node where those two roads intersect. I'm sure there'll be a light there in the future, because now you have a five lane coming into a five lane, Burntob going five lane all the way, both, you know, east and west will be critical to the development of that area. The idea of the self-storage is really several-fold. You know, basically, when you're trying to plan where mini-stores would go, you're looking for new roofs and possible need, and that particular area, there isn't really self-storage serving that community. So they would be in early in that opportunity. And also, the thought of having potentially some commercial on the front portion of the property, that's really to just maximize the frontage that they may purchase. A lot of times, we don't want self-storage on, as a frontal kind of application, just because it's not really necessary for its success. Typically, if you have an access point, an office, the rest can go to another type of service. And then the thought there is there's going to be just another opportunity to have some sort of support, service, or business to the West Park activities. We know that many-stores have, basically, the county requirements these days require maybe a fortress-style type of design, and that's what you see on the concept plan, is really what would happen on Gritten Court would be a, some sort of a masonry wall with associated landscaping along that roadway. And I've already spoken with the owners, there's not an issue with not having an access point on the Gritten. A lot of times, they're required to have, you know, two entry access points, but I think we can accommodate that by justifying the entry point to the western side of their particular property, and just making that wide enough to accommodate all the needs that would come with both the commercial development and the mini storage. As far as the site and the drainage, it hasn't been studied yet as far as how that will all be handled, but if you look at the concept plan, the area where it is traditionally low has all been preserved for natural drainage. There's also that, basically, it looks like a roadway, but that's actually a kind of a green drainage connector that kind of bridges the back portion of the self-storage to the front portion. And that's a drainway that has to go through the property to accommodate all the drainage from the subdivision as well as the area around. So that's what's actually happening onsite. So we're compensating for the water moving through the property at that particular location. So as anticipated, there'll be a lot of water that has to be considered. However, we do feel like if we can develop a portion of the property that allows us to get our grades properly, we feel like it's prime for development. And lastly, I think, again, I think as was mentioned, all the buffer requirements would be met, and mini-storages, we've seen in the past, is a pretty soft user. It doesn't impact school systems. It really minimizes a really big traffic impact, and so the actual physical impact along Gritten could be very, very minimal, much less than what you'd have if there is comparable homes across the street. So we feel like it's a pretty soft use in terms of the adjacent neighbors, and we feel like a lot of those properties along Burntob are going to be continued to experience commercial development pressure. So that's our request, is that you would approve us to go ahead and get commercial services zoning, with the possibility in future phase to have some strip center component, but also reserve in the right if the mini-storage does well, that that may be flexible in terms of how much is actually zoned for that strip center, and how much is, are actually used for that strip center, and how much is used for the self-storage. I'm available for any questions you may have right now, and I'd love to be able to respond to anything that may come out of the public hearing as far as neighbors' concerns. Thank you.
Right now, you mentioned the subdivision drainage. Was the subdivision designed to drain to that property originally?
Yes. If that's what that green kind of connector is, is that allows the subdivision continue to drain right through the subject property.
Have you had any kind of a neighborhood meeting with the folks on Gritten?
No, Mrs. Hamilton has met with the neighbors and spoken with everyone individually, to my knowledge, and, okay, not everyone individually, but she's, at least you may have to speak to that, because you spoke specifically to them. But yeah, she's gone through the neighborhood, as well as the owner, spoken to many of the adjacent owners as well, the owner of the property.
I know you said that the water would need to be studied further. Are you planning on consulting with a hydrologist and getting a formal hydrologist's report for that, or no?
Well, based on, based on that drainage basin that's behind, you know, that's not, that big old green spot that's not developed, we've already done a general kind of quasi. The question was from the potential developer was, you know, is this necessary, that amount of area? And after our preliminary studies, we realized that that is, every bit of that green space that would go undeveloped, is going to be necessary for the proper drainage of the subdivision, as well as the new development.
So you're satisfied with that level of study on it? You're not...
At this level, it's very similar to what the previous man said, you know, without the purchase of the property and all the engineering that would go into that to make sure, but we're confident that the basin being preserved will respect the drainage concerns of the area.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Well, I see someone coming up. Let me just make one kind of a general comment. I know there'll probably be a lot of concerns about water, come on up, about water, and our job tonight is to make a decision based upon the appropriateness of this rezoning request. All water concerns will have to be addressed after this is either approved, and the applicant, along with their engineers and our county engineers, will be dealing with the water issue. So water concerns would be something that we have, as you probably already heard, but they're probably something that we won't be able to address, but what we will address tonight is the appropriateness of this rezoning request, and then all of those other concerns would have to be addressed to our satisfaction at site plan. Excuse me, go ahead.
I'm Alice Hilton, and I'm the owner of 122 Gritten Court. I face the property in question. I've lived there since 2013. I used to live downtown Murfreesboro since 2005. I'm incredibly excited about our new park across the street. I'm so in love with Blackman community. Anybody who lives out there knows the area. It's an amazing neighborhood. We have a very small street that has one exit, one entrance. Our neighbors are all very aware of whose cars are whose and who belongs to which house. I feel very safe there. I feel very confident walking outside at night. I feel that this development is not fitting with our neighborhood. There's lots of children, lots of pets. I understand from the plan of the park that there will probably be more families coming to the area. The single point of entry is not a problem for us, because we are such a small community. I believe there's nine or 10 houses on the street. We daily have buses coming in and out, but that's really our only source of major traffic. I was not dissuaded from living in this property, knowing that Blackman is growing, but it breaks my heart to think that we could have an entrance point to a public facility on our street, especially having two of them. At this time, basically, if I see a car, I know who it belongs to. If there's an entrance, two entrances, I have strangers coming in and out of my neighborhood all times of night and day. Most self-storage units are 24 hours and are unmonitored. They do have video surveillance, but there's no onsite security. The activities that go on in them, we don't know what's happening. This is actually a very concerning thing for me, also because if we have an entrance to a self-storage unit, any Class D driver can drive a U-Haul through our street. It's a street where children play, people walk their pets, and anyone can drive a large, dangerous vehicle up and down our street at any speed they choose. The potential strip mall, I question what kind of businesses will be there. I could see some good in that, but I can also see some bad. There could be some great family businesses that would be lovely to walk to, but on the other hand, I would be completely heartbroken to see a tobacco store or a liquor store, or something that's just not sightly for our family community. And I will go ahead and bypass my concerns about the drainage. I'm incredibly concerned. I've lived there now for four and a half years, and I've seen my drainage rise to the level of my yard. It's never come above that, thankfully, but I have seen the property in question hold a lot of water, and I am incredibly concerned about what will happen when we start putting concrete down. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you opening up the floor to us, and I would like you to strongly consider not approving this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Casey Clark. I live at 118 Gritten Court. Alice's and Brandon are actually my neighbors. My driveway is basically directly across from the Gritten Court access to the property in question. Currently, I live across the street from a business, so I know what problems are going to arise from having a lot of traffic on your street, and early mornings due to noise and noise pollution and constant up and down the road traffic for carrying of the business. That is one of my main concerns, considering this, is that the access to Gritten Court, which we've already discussed apparently, is one of the major things that you're not going to let happen, would just increase that traffic flow. The second thing that I'm really concerned about is the fact that the strip mall, and my concerns are pretty much the same as Alice', we don't know what kind of business is going to go in there. We also don't know how well these businesses are going to do, and once they start to decline, what are they going to turn over into? What's next? I moved there about three and a half years ago. I loved the neighborhood. It's generally quiet. Moved there because it was a dead-end street, and I figured that, you know, a lot of people would probably appreciate the value of living on a dead-end street, which would make the property values increase. One of my other major concerns is that currently, there is a bus storage facility across the street on the property. There's about seven school buses, and I'm a little worried that the .3 acres that are being allotted at the end of the property is going to be the new home for all these seven buses. So I have no idea that that's the plan, but that means we don't lose that, we just gain more traffic, right? And I get woken up somewhere between 3:00 and 4:30 every weekday morning that school's going on, either by traffic or by buses starting. Sometimes they make other noises as well. So I'm asking you to please not recommend this, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Hamilton. I'm President Covington Coleman, or Coleman Covington, sorry. And I want to address some of those issues. We will not have entrances onto Gritten. That was just in the concept, and we had talked about taking them out before the meeting, but we'd left them in. So we will not have any entrances there. So neighbors, you know, and we want to work with the neighbors. We do not want, you know, we want to, we understand, you know, that they live in a quiet neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. I mean, of all the commercial things that could go in there, we figure self-storage is quiet. You know, we would, I would be running it with our partners, and I would be there daily. We want to be part of the neighborhood, part of the park, and if we do retail in front, we want it to be, you know, family, ice cream shops, things to support the park. We don't want to, you know, be a disruption or anything to the neighborhood or the people that live there. So, and as far as speaking to the neighbors, we want to be there for them. If they have concerns, we will address those. If anything comes up, you know, we, it'll be in the least that, you know, you have one chance, if anything is brought to our attention, that nothing will, you know, we want to be part, we want them to, we want them to be safe and everything. So I understand all their concerns, and, but as Clyde said, that the, nervous, and then we also talked to Joe Gorley, our commissioner, our district commissioner. He was for it. I don't think he could be here tonight, but we had talked to him, and he was for it. So I'm here if there's any other questions, and, anybody had any questions?
Not allowed, sorry. It's okay. Any questions from the commission?
I'm not sure at this time. Sorry. They may go into this, I don't know necessarily.
I can probably help address that at least a little bit. As far as the concerns about moving, if this remaining property is combined with the house right to the north, I mean, that property, the bus service that the owner provides has been ongoing for a number of years. He just couldn't move it to another piece of property. He's probably what I would consider grandfathered on this site. You can't move grandfathering status to another piece of property, so he just couldn't take those and move those legally. That would have to be a special zoning for that, and quite frankly, I mean, I'll just tell you right now, I'm never going to recommend approval of that on a subdivision lot, so. tell you right now, I'm never going to recommend approval of that on a subdivision lot, so.
Good evening. My name's Jessica Merriman. My family and I live at 114 Gritten Court. So our property faces the property in question. I've attended tonight because I want to express my several concerns about the commercialization of this property, the biggest of which was the two entrances on Gritten Court, which I understand now that that's going to be off the table. I appreciate that. Thank you. Gritten Court is a quiet little street with quiet little families. Everybody knows everybody. Alice and Brandon are great neighbors. Casey's a great neighbor. It's one of those streets where people don't, there's not a lot of turnover. People know each other. We genuinely look out for each other. These are families with children. I have three small children, well, one kind of large and two small children. One of my biggest concerns is that our 15-year-old son is profoundly deaf. He, if he wants to take a jog or walk the dog on a street where there are going to be moving trucks and delivery trucks servicing these businesses at the proposed strip mall, what's this going to do to his usage of our little street? Gritten Court is a very narrow street. Two cars pass each other, and it gets tight. With the proposed strip mall, businesses receive deliveries by large trucks at all hours. I'm very much concerned that the location of Gritten Court to the strip mall, there is no other turnaround for businesses for truck servicing this area other than Gritten Court. They're going to be coming down our street, trying to turn around in our little cul-de-sac, and the traffic is, it's not only obnoxious, it's dangerous. I understand the flooding is something that is not something that we want to get into tonight. I do just want to, you know, kind of reiterate what Alice said, that even a moderate rain fills up the ditches along Gritten Court and gets up into the yard. A good hard rain, the fronts of our yards will be flooded. I'm very, very much concerned about that. I find that commercial property is just incompatible with this little residential street. I do want to echo what Casey said also. I'm concerned that where are these buses going to go? We've got six, seven school buses all stored on the property in question. Are they all going to now get pushed to this back third of an acre? That's right there in the cul-de-sac, so that's, you know, it's just clogging up every, you know, the only little turnaround we have. We only have one exit. The strip mall also is especially concerning to me. I have worked in residential and commercial property management rentals for about 11 years, and I've seen the cycle. I see it all the time. Nice new place comes in, pretty storefronts, new construction, higher rents. These businesses go in, everything's well and good for a year, two years. Business dwindles, the newness of the park wears off. Next thing you know, these little storefronts, these little niche storefronts aren't getting the business that they used to. Next thing you know, they can't make the rent. And what happens to property owners when you've got a vacancy? You drop your prices and you drop your standards. So then what kind of businesses go in to these rentals right next to nine families? I would also, you know, echo what Alice said. It would break my heart to have a discount tobacco and beer store right across from the street where my family rides their bikes and walks our dog. Again, incompatibility is just something I want to stress. I would respectfully request that you not approve this rezoning tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Beverly Cook. I also live in that neighborhood. I'm at 130 Gritten Court. I think many of the concerns that everybody had have been addressed. The water's been addressed and talked about. The biggest concern, I think, for everybody that's been echoed has been the access on Gritten Court. That's been addressed. Whether we like it or not, the face of our neighborhood is about to change with the park coming in there. Whether we like it or not, businesses are coming in. I mean, we don't have a choice. Some of those decisions have already been made. The other great concern is where these buses are going. That's already been addressed with Doug, that he's not going to approve that anyway. So I don't see a reason for preventing a man from doing what he wants to do and buying and selling his property. It would be different if we were isolated, and this park wasn't coming in, and a five-lane road coming in and bringing in this business anyway, but it's changing whether we want to or whether we want it or not. And so to stand in that way, when all these concerns have been addressed, for me, I think is ridiculous to put it off and not make a decision tonight. So those are my comments about it, not really concerns anymore. The concerns that I came in here with tonight have very well been addressed, and I'm comfortable with this, and so I just wanted to speak up and let you know that those feelings are not the feelings of everyone in the neighborhood, and not all people have been addressed. We weren't approached by the person that's purchasing the property. They've not made any contact with any, I don't know about my other neighbors, but they haven't contacted me. But we were all made aware by the property owner initially whenever he made contact and was planning to sell that property. So we've known that this was going to come up. So those are the comments that I wanted to make tonight before you make that final decision. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. My name's Doug. I live on Gritten Court at 126. I hadn't heard or been in a lot of the discussions that's going on to kind of know what was coming up, what was going to be proposed. I knew that there was a storage facility that was proposed or, I guess, planned, and didn't know anything about the strip mall or strip, whatever it's called, up at the front. Some of my concerns coming in to tonight was going to be the access to Gritten Court to kind of know what they were talking about. They've addressed them. If there's not access on the Gritten Court, personally, that doesn't bother me. There's already school buses that go, they're housed there, that go up and down that road. I think everybody that lives on that road, those buses were there before then, so, you know, that kind of traffic was known when you bought it. You knew it was there. You knew what was going on, so that's not necessarily a change. The only changes will be what I see when I look out my front door. And y'all talking about, what is it, a Class II? A barrier?
Or a Type 2 buffer.
A Type 2? What is that exactly?
The minimum required buffer on a Type 2 is 30 foot. Now, that's off of property lines, not necessarily off of rights of way, but the way he's showing that on that concept plan, he's showing, do you have that concept plan? You can put it up on the screen. Thanks. He's showing what's called, what we would call fortress style. Now, again, understand, this is conceptual or not locked into this design at this point, but what they're showing is basically the backs of those areas, which can be, the material used can be, it won't be just like a metal-type building. There'll be, you know, a sort of masonry-type element to it. But along the other property lines, you're looking at a minimum of 30 foot unless they do like a solid visual screen, like a brick wall or like a fence or something like that. Then you can narrow that down to 15 foot, and you don't have to plant shrubs, but there are still trees and things required. So what you are seeing there is conceptual design of a fortress style along Gritten Court, along with a landscape area as well to help break that up.
Well, living here, I've lived at this house for a year, so it hasn't changed much in the year that I've lived there, but I've lived in Middle Tennessee for most all of my life. I grew up in Nolanville, if anybody's been there. I lived there for 30 years. It ain't the same. I know this happens. It grows. You're putting a park in, so things are going to change. It happens. I just, I don't necessarily have concerns with it, and I don't have concerns. I don't want to be something, someone that stops someone else from selling their land the way that they would like to. You know, it's his land. It's had a commercial, I mean, the buses there, and that's almost a commercial for what you're living in nowadays, you know, up there on the court, on Gritten Court right now, so I've got no concerns about it. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? This gentleman in the back here had a question. I'd like to hear it. Please. I apologize for cutting you off. It's okay.
I'm Brandon Hilton. I'm Alice's husband. I think the, you know, major concern besides those access points was the fact that, you know, not only are you going to have this storage facility, but you're also going to have this bus business. And I know we've talked about it and feel like it's been somewhat addressed, but when I asked the owner about this a month ago, he intimated to me that he planned to split those buses up and put half of them on that property that we're adding the .3 acres to and the property that he owns on Burtonob Road. I'm concerned that he's going to line the streets with those buses. We're going to have those buses. We're going to have this storage facility over here, and what is that going to do to equity in our home? I mean, you know, who's going to want to buy a home with storage buildings and buses everywhere? So, I mean, I guess that's, I mean, I just really feel like that's still a sticking point for me personally. I make sure while I'm up here I don't leave anything else out. I mean, that's pretty much it. Aside from the fact that, you know, with this commercial services issue, and I was reading this, you know, about what is allowed in commercial services, they could, you know, we could zone this commercial, and then they could decide, well, we don't want to do storage buildings. We want to do something else. And what's really to stop that? And that's what I don't understand, you know, and that's a big reservation. You can assure people all you want to, we're doing this, we're doing that, you know, just like we were told originally, there weren't going to be access points on Gritten Court, and then there were, and apparently now they're not again. And so, you know, I mean, I just, that's a huge concern for me, and, I mean, I would just like to recommend against it. Thank you.
Doug, you want to address that, what's going to stop them?
Yeah, well, let me, just a couple of points that the gentleman brought up. First, let me go back to the buses, just to clarify that just a little bit. Again, the gentleman that owns the property now, it's over five acres. He's been doing his business for a number of years. He was doing his business when I started working for the county, which has been 11-plus years now. So as far as him actually taking those buses and saying, and of course, I had to have any conversations with him, so I don't know exactly what was said, but if he's having any thoughts about taking these buses, if this were to be approved after they combine that remaining acreage to the property right to the north, I'm just going to tell you right now, other arrangements need to be made because the only way that that would be allowed is to have that property rezoned to allow him to do what he's doing. It's a little different if he, let's say he just drove a bus on his own, and he had one bus, and he kept it on the property. We see that in the county and various places. There's places in the city of Murfreesboro that have that, owner-operators that have one bus, and they park it in their driveway. There's probably not a whole lot I can do about that. Is there anything that I can do about multiple buses on that property? I would think that would need to be a zoning change. And again, I'm not going to recommend that, a zoning change for that piece of property in that configuration on this street. I'm just, I'm just not. He can't claim grandfathering status if he wanted to because the property is grandfather, or the use, rather, is grandfathered on a property as it exists. If he changes the property and he adds property to the other, that grandfathering status is lost. So he can't just say, well, I'm going to move this business here because I've been doing it for 20 years or however long he's been doing it for, on a different property. That's not how it works. So that's, I'm just saying, if that's what his plan is, he needs to come up with different plans because that's not going to fly as far as I'm concerned. As far as the use of the property that the gentleman brought up, I mean, I'll just say it, this is conceptual. They're not locked into this. If they were to get this rezoned and wanted to do something different, if it was allowed in the zoning regulations as far as the use is concerned, they could do that. I don't think that changes the fact that we don't want to see any access onto Gritten Court. I think we have some teeth as far as that goes. Some other things that they need to keep in mind as well as they look at developing this property is, you know, how much usable soil is on the property. Many storage-type facilities probably not going to require much in the way of any septic soils, so that would allow them to develop more of the property with that particular use. If they wanted to put retail uses there that require bathrooms or restaurants that require more water usage and disposal, that requires more septic soils. This property does not have access at this time to city sewer. If the city sewer becomes available and they want to tap into it, they'll have to contact the city of Murfreesboro and request annexation into the city to get city sewer. So depending on the amount of soils on the property and everything, that could limit potentially the type of uses that you could have on a property. If you have a decent soil site and you want to put a restaurant, that may eat up any usable soil that you have. That'd be all they could do on the property. So that's a limiting factor as far as that goes. But as far as the uses are concerned, I mean, there've been some of the uses brought up as far as like a liquor store, tobacco, those kind of things. Those all fall under general retail in our zoning ordinance, which is allowed in the commercial services zone. If this is on commercial services and they want to have a tobacco, beer market, something like that, there's not going to be a whole lot I can do about it because it does meet the zoning requirements. So I just throw that all out there for your consideration.
Anyone else? Before the applicant comes back up, is there anyone else that hasn't spoke that would like to speak? Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
I would just like to address a few more comments that the neighbors had to do our best. Like you said, there's never assurances if you get a bulk zone and all of a sudden something changes, but everyone goes with the intention of trying to do something that they feel like would be beneficial business-wise and, as Mrs. Hamilton said, beneficial to the neighbors as well. As far as the commercial strip center, really, the thought there was the fact that the park's going to have such limited frontage. There's going to be a lot of family-oriented businesses that could probably be very successful at that location, and really because the park is more of a regional park, which means that it'll be hosting big tournaments and, you know, people will be staying for the weekend or who knows how long. So something like an ice cream shop or something like a Subway or something like that could be very successful, that location, just because of the demand that the park's going to put on that perimeter. If the park was in a situation where all sides were accessible and the commercial could go all the way around the property, there'd be less pressure on Burtonob and Veterans probably for developing those types of businesses. So with that in mind, if we can do one thing to try to alleviate some of the concerns, I heard a lot of concerns over traffic on Gritten Court, we would do everything in our power to make sure that anything related to this mini storage or the potential commercial strip area, to have the access justified to that western side. So really, Gritten Court would not be in the mix for any of the service trucks or anything like that. So it's obvious that we're going to try to protect the character of the existing neighborhood, and as Doug mentioned, that fortress-style wall gives you basically a masonry barrier for anything going on inside the mini storage, as well as the additional landscaping should keep that whole use fairly passive in nature. So that would be a commitment we would make to the neighbors as we develop to make sure that there wouldn't be any access on Gritten from the, from the mini storage nor the strip center as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure.
Just want to make a quick response. If I understand this correctly, this hearing is not about what's going to go into this business, but just to rezonate commercial. My response would be twofold. One is, we're just talking about a rezoning. You can do whatever you want. You know, once it's zoned commercial, you don't have to put in a strip center or a mini storage facility. I do want to put it out there. I do hear you saying that we're going to put in this mini storage.
mini-storage. Mrs. Hamilton did not contact my husband or me to, and I'm aware, under the impression that she did not contact Casey, Allison Brandon, I know she didn't contact our neighbors Haley and Shane at 110 Gritten. So that doesn't exactly bode well, when, when someone is saying, well, this is what we intend. I appreciate the intention, I appreciate the concept, but y'all didn't come talk to us. Secondly, is with regard to the strip center, whether we're talking about an ice cream shop, or a tobacco beer, or, you know, movie store, whatever, businesses have long hours. And just want to go back to what I said before about, Gritten Court is the only turnaround point, you know, to get off of what's about to be a very major road going in both directions on Burnt Knob. Businesses of any sort with these long hours are going to be bringing turnarounds on Gritten Court, you know, very late into the night. Currently, there are no streetlights on Gritten Court, and there is no shoulder on the road. So any business traffic, any turnaround traffic, we do have, as Mr. Demosey was saying, we do have one of these owner-operators that you were mentioning, that just, you know, one lady owns a school bus, parks it in her driveway, all well and good. You know, the clogging up of Gritten Court is especially concerning, because there is nowhere for people to go. You know, and again, I want to say, I appreciate the concept of this mini-storage, but at the end of the day, once it's rezoned, they can do whatever they want, and this is a family street. Thank you.
That I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
I have a number of concerns. I think we've established we can take the entry off Gritten Lane, off of the, off of the things to consider. I still have a lot of concerns with the flooding in the area, with my knowledge of the area and our concerns, the concerns that our county engineer has expressed. I can't for the life of me figure out where that water's going to go. I do know the property, Catta Corner across Veterans was flooded for a long time after the 2010 flood, and it was catastrophic for several pieces of property in that area. And looking at this drainage map, this is the low point for a long way around that area. Most of it's flat, with surrounded by hills, but that, that's here again, that falls to the engineers, so that, can't consider that too much tonight. But we also need to recall that we have approved a mini-storage for about a half a mile to the west of here, down Burnt Knob Road, down a little closer to the Rogers Group Quarry there. My biggest concern, though, is with the park, we haven't seen a plan from the city yet for exactly how the park's going to be laid out, what their intentions for the neighborhood. And in my mind, a park is built for, for people. And hopefully, those people live close by, and they can walk to the park. And if we're going to use up seven acres and start throwing in, and more, you know, encouraging commercial, more commercial area right in the middle of a residential area, well, that kind of defeats the purpose of having, having the park there for people. I would just like to see more. Don't consume the precious land around there for all the commercial stuff. Now, that's not to say at some point in the city, the, in the future, I know the city is going to develop a lot of that, or it's going to allow a lot of that to be developed in commercial. It's probably inevitable, but I just don't think, at this time, that it's right for commercial services in there. It's just a little bit premature. Down the road, maybe it's something worth considering, but CS is a little bit much at this point, in my mind.
Other comments?
On that piece that's up there, we're talking about that .3, and it's .3 today, it may be something else, I don't know if he, if they choose to, depending on what we do with it tonight. As long as it doesn't get in the joint with another property, can he just move his bus stuff up to that piece of property that's left? Because it's still part of that, not that I'm saying there's enough room, but he may decide to go back and do something different. Again, as long as he's, it's there, there's nothing we really can do to take it away from him. Correct? As long as it stays within the property that he has?
Well, and I'm going to be speaking in hypotheticals, so bear with me. If this property were to be zoned, I would anticipate that there would have to be some sort of a sale of the property to the owners that are looking to develop the property. At that point, there would have to be a subdivision plat that would have to be submitted to our office for review, something like that, probably be administrative, so that probably wouldn't come to the planning commission for anything, which would create a new property, which would have to show soil sites and everything like that, assuming there was no waivers required, again, administrative. Assuming that's what happens, I still don't think he could move his buses to that, because that's a new piece of property, it's residentially zoned, the grandfathering status, again, is lost. I don't think he can transfer all the rezon, or the, excuse me, all the grandfathering to that new property that's created, just even if it's just separated from the parent tract and is not combined with the property to the north, as they've indicated they want to do. So I'm still thinking, just based on, you know, looking at this, and trying to kind of work this through my head as we, as we talk, I still don't think that's a grandfather situation at that point. I think after, if he sells that property and transfers that land, or even just leaves it as a separate lot, maybe for someone to build a house on, I don't think there's any grandfathering at that point. I still think that other arrangements need to be made for those buses.
But that was, that was still just, to me, was still a bit blurry about what, what could be done, so I just wanted to make sure that could get cleared up.
Chairman, may I ask that same question to our county attorney? Would he agree with Doug's hypothetical?
I'd agree.
In terms of the grandfathering?
Yes.
Would be null and void?
I think that, generally speaking, in order for grandfathering to apply, the piece of property and the use have to remain constant. So Doug's point is, if he sells off that seven acres and retains three, that three acres is less than five acres, which means he'll have to show that on a subdivision plat, so that is now a new lot, and so he would lose his grandfathering by virtue of creating a new lot.
Thank you, Josh. Any other questions? At this point, the chairman is looking for a motion.
Considering all things, and I do tend to agree with Mr. Everwater a little bit on all that's going to take place out there, again, it's, you know, of course, it's not going to be just a walking park, I mean, there's going to be ball fields, so you're going to have several thousand people in there over multiple weekends, once it's all built out, so it's, it's not going to be the park that, you know, you just walk across the street and go hang out with your kids or family, or whatever. I do believe that everything down Veterans, and eventually, that southern portion of Burnt Knob, that's the county is, or the city already has, is going to be some type of commercial in standing, but until we say more, or, you know, until I say more, I kind of tend to agree, I do would not want to see anything accessed off that property onto Gritten Court in the future. It needs to stay as it is, you know, more of a residential area. So without going into more detail, I make a motion to deny the application tonight.
We have a motion, and a second to deny the rezoning request for item 18A003. Other questions? Other comments? We have a motion to deny. All those in favor of that motion to deny, please say aye. Opposition? We have a motion to deny. All those in favor of that motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
I'm pretty sure that the motion to deny carries, but we're going to do the roll call anyway. Go.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater.
Aye.
Lee Bogle.
Aye.
David Jones.
Aye.
Mike Kush.
Mike Kush.
Craig Lynch.
Aye.
Chip Pinion.
Aye.
Charlotte P.
Aye.
Pettis Reed.
Aye.
Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Yeses and three noes.
Motion to deny carries. This doesn't stop this request from going forward. It is, it will be scheduled to be heard before the county commission on Thursday, February the 15th, 6:00 PM, in this courtroom. And it will go before the county commission with a recommendation to deny from this planning Everyone out there understand? Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 22nd, 9:00 AM, and the planning mess. Doug, you have anything?
No, sir. Mike, did you have anything? We're good.
Commissioners, you have anything? Thank you for your attendance, your participation, and for the community, for your involvement in this process. We are adjourned.